Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting for Thursday, February 11th, 2021. The time is now 6:10 PM. Sorry about being a little bit late. We were just working on an executive session. Due to concerns over exposure to COVID-19, the city has implemented measures to protect our community, including the closing of council chambers and limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may view the live meeting proceedings on Tempe Channel 11 or attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx Events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. First item on the agenda is item number one. A moment of silence. Let's just take a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Next up, item number two, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. I will go ahead and lead here. I pledge allegiance...
To the flag.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Next up, item number three, meeting minutes to assist this evening. I've got Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Adams, are you there?
I'm trying to get there. Can you hear me now?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, I motion to approve, uh, item 3A.
All right, great. Thank you so much. It's been moved by Councilmember Adams, excuse me, for the approval of city council meeting minutes, item 3A1. Do I have a second? Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. All right, with that said, I'm gonna go ahead and call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Vice Mayor Keating? Councilmember Arredondo Savage? Councilmember Adams?
Aye, Mayor, sorry.
No worries. Aye. Okay, let me just check here, see if anyone has sent me a vote here. Uh, question, is anyone allowed, uh, Madam Clerk, are they allowed to vote by text, by chance?
That would probably be a question for our city attorney.
Okay, uh, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, the council rules of procedure and the open meeting law would allow by electronic means for council members to participate, so I think in this instance, it's fine.
Okay, uh, let me just, uh, hold on here. Give me one second here. Okay, Vice Mayor Keating has voted yes. And I'm just going to go ahead and go to Councilmember Cubey. Councilmember Cubey, are you there? I can see your thing there. Councilmember Cubey, it looks like you're unmuted, but I can't hear you. Okay, um, with that said, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna vote aye as well. Councilmember Cubey? Okay, uh, okay, that, that motion passes 6 to 0.
I'm gonna try this.
Oh, is that you, Councilmember Cubey? I hear you. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, are you there?
Okay, Lauren, you can try now.
Sorry, sorry, people want to have some real technical issues this evening, so...
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me? This is not...
I can hear you now. I was gonna ask, uh, your vote on item 3A, meeting minutes.
Aye.
Okay, great. That motion passes unanimously, 7 to 0. No worries. Couple of members this evening, there were some technical problems, no worries. We worked through it. Next up is the acceptance of board commission and committee meeting minutes. Councilmember Adams.
Yes, I move to, uh, to approve, uh, item 3B, accepting of board commission and committee meeting minutes.
Thank you very much.
Seconded by...
Seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Go ahead and call for a roll call vote here. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Let me just, uh, uh, Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Adams?
Aye. Aye.
Yep, thank you. Just gonna wait for Vice Mayor Keating here.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Yep, you're good. I'm gonna vote aye as well, um, and I, and also Vice Mayor Keating votes aye, so that has been passed unanimously, item 3B, acceptance of board commission and committee meeting minutes. Thank you very much. Next up, we have item number 4A here, mayor's reports and announcements. I don't have any. Next up, item 4B, city manager's reports and announcements. Mr. Ching, do you have it in this evening?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great. Uh, I'm gonna have Greg put a, a, uh, up on the screen here, real quick. Just a reminder, uh, to everyone who's viewing tonight or future streaming views, that we are looking to get nominations for the Neighborhood Awards, uh, coming up Wednesday, February 17th, 2021. Staff wanted me to go ahead and put out that reminder, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. All right, so next up is the consent agenda. I wanted to announce to everyone, obviously, the public may, actually, I'll hold up really quickly, got a little ahead of myself here. Next up, item 5, consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk, and council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. Public may also submit written comments via the City of Tempe Speaker Comment Card System at tempe.gov/clerk. Go ahead and start the consent agenda is announced as miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A6, awards of bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B23, and resolutions, item 5C1 through item 5C10. Once again, any agenda item marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item and can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. Council, are there any items that you would like removed for separate consideration this All right, hearing none. Um, Madam Clerk, were any items requested to be removed?
Nothing for the consent agenda, Mayor.
All right, hearing none, then I will go ahead and call for the approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
You're mayor, so moved. Oh, seconded.
So, okay, so, okay, moved by Councilmember Cubey, seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. To go ahead and call for a roll call vote, Councilmember Navarro? Okay, Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Okay, I'm looking, he votes aye as well. Um, Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye, Mayor.
Okay, and I vote aye as well. The consent agenda is approved unanimously, 7 to 0. Okay, next up here, we're gonna go to the non-consent agenda. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Councilmembers who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with a disclosure form at this time. All right, first item under this section is item 6A1, which is to award job order number 17 to Atch and Gardner Construction LLC for the waterline replacement, ASU Campus Phase 1 Tyler Mall from Katy Paul Tom Walk Project located at 1151 South Forest Avenue. We're getting a little bit of feedback, can all council members, uh, please mute a little while we're talking, so... Great, thank you so much, everyone. All right, um, let's see here, item number, okay, so we're gonna go here, uh, anyone here, any comments or discussion from council? All right, uh, Madam Clerk, any, uh, any comment cards on this item?
Nothing for this item, Mayor.
Okay, great. All right, we'll go ahead and call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Okay, he votes aye as well. Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Aye, Mayor.
And I vote aye as well.
Aye, Mayor.
Yep, okay, I got you. Item 6A1 passes 7 to 0. The next item under this agenda is 6A2, which is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution to add a monthly service rate for a 10-inch water meter in the schedule of charges, rates, deposits, and fees for water services by amending Appendix A, schedule of fees and charges of the Tempe City Code. Is staff available to make a statement on this item? I see Terry here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I can make a brief statement on this item. This is for a, the addition of a 10-inch, 10-inch meter to our schedule of rates and fees. This is an existing meter that was inadvertently left out of the 2020 water and wastewater rate study, was identified later, and then we went back with our financial consultant, and they performed an analysis and established, established a fee associated with that meter. This meter has been in service for many years, but it was inadvertently left out of the data collection process as part of the 2020 rate study, so this resolution is to include that back into the schedule of rates and fees so that we're squared away. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Terry. Uh, Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public on this item?
Nothing for this item, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or discussions on item 6A2?
Moved or approved.
Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. I'm gonna go ahead and call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? He votes yes. Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6A2 passes unanimously, 7 to 0. The next item under the section is item 6A3, which is to approve an amendment to the five-year sole source contract with renewal options with Xylem View Incorporated, a Delaware corporation, originally the Confluence Group, for implementation services for the expansion of the Kona Work Order Asset Management System to create a comprehensive asset management solution. Council, any comments or discussions on item 6A3? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded, Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. I'm gonna go ahead and call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Yes, on that one? Uh, Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye, Mayor.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6A3 passes unanimously, 7 to 0. The next item under the section is 6A4, which is to award a three-year contract to IT Partners for the lease purchase of VMware software and services that are used by the Internal Services Department to support numerous software applications throughout the city. Council, any comments or discussion on item 6A4? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna look for a motion. Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. I'm gonna call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Looks like aye there as well. Uh, Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye, Mayor.
And I vote aye as well. That item passes unanimously, 7 to 0. Next up is item 6A5, which is to adopt a resolution amending the Tempe City Code, Appendix A, Table 1A, Building Permit Fees, Table 2A, Miscellaneous Fees, Table 3A, Private Development Engineering Fees, 21 through 51 Reinspection Fee, and Chapter 35 Zoning and Development Fees, and by reference those fees in Zoning and Development Code, Appendix H, Zoning and Development Fees, to remove two existing fees, Private Development Engineering Permit Fees and Document Management Fees, and to include a new fee for technology and training to advance and sustain planning, building safety, neighborhood outreach, and code enforcement of customer service practices and technologies. Councilmembers, any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and look to the council for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. I'm gonna call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Seconded, I mean, aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Aye, okay. Uh, Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye, Mayor.
And I vote aye as well. That motion passes 7 to 0. Next item under this section is item 6A6, which is to approve the utilization of one-year Omniop Partners Cooperative Contracts with SHI International Corporation and CDW Government LLC for the purchase of software licensing, support, technology products, and services to be overseen by the Internal Services Department. Council, yes?
Sorry to interrupt. Vice Mayor Keating is back as an attendee. I just need the clerk to elevate him back up to panelist.
Mayor, is there someone's mic on?
Yes, and all, and all councilmembers, I'll ask you to mute when you're not speaking, just to make sure we're not getting any background or feedback. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Navarro. All right, and thank you, Mr. Ching as well. All right, um, were there any comments or discussion on item 6A6? All right, uh, hearing none, I'll look to the council for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Cubey. I'm gonna go ahead and call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6A6 passes unanimously, 7 to 0. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for March 25th, 2021. First up, item 6B1, introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from HID to MU4, a planned area development overlay for an existing office building on Lot 1, a new apartment community on Lot 2, and new 13,500 square-foot retail and restaurant uses on Lot 3 to establish development standards and a development plan review for lots 2 and 3. The site Rio East is 14.2 acres, located at 98 South River Drive. The applicant is Quarles &amp; Brady. I believe the applicant, Ben Graff, is available to make a statement.
Mayor and council, this is Ben Graff. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Wonderful. Uh, for the record, Ben Graff with a law from Quarles &amp; Brady, uh, to North Central Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona. We are here representing Streetlights Residential as one of the core applicants, um, but also the underlying landowner is, uh, Tom Leclerc with Rio Segal LLC, um, and also an underlying landowner is, uh, Boyer Development because of the office building as well. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, share my screen, and Mayor, could you please confirm that, uh, the council is able to see my screen?
Uh, yes, Mr. Graff, we've got the screen up.
Wonderful. Truly appreciate it, um, and thank you for everyone's ongoing efforts to make these online hearings work. It's, it's quite impressive every time. I'm still not used to it. Uh, thank you again, Mayor and Council, for, uh, your time and consideration tonight on our first agenda item. Um, I am here speaking directly, uh, in regard to, uh, the application before you for a rezoning, DPR approval, and PAD. Um, this is just a, a quick glimpse at the total team, um, that we have involved in this. Butler Design has led the, uh, design of the retail, Streetlights Residential, and the multifamily, um, and of course, as I mentioned, uh, Mr. Leclerc and, uh, Mr. Evercue from, uh, Boyer Residential or Boyer Office is also deeply involved. Um, I'll move on to the way that this site is actually split up into three different applications. Uh, we are moving from HID to MU4, a planned area development, and then the DPR review itself. Uh, the mayor did a good job going over the basic address and, um, size, I'll skip over that. And I want to start off with, I think it was an exciting announcement that we were excited to share with the council tonight, uh, and I'll get into the details of our, uh, development plan in just a moment, um, but I don't need to obviously remind the council of a very important Hometown For All initiative, uh, that you, uh, recently approved in January. Um, our project, our development team looked very closely at this. We worked with staff to understand how it could possibly, uh, be applied to this development, and I'm happy to answer questions tonight, but, um, the purpose of this slide is to inform the council and the public, um, that this development team has decided proactively to be fully committed to the parameters and, um, I guess some of the requests, you know, hopes of this initiative. Um, it is a voluntary donation, of course, and we are committed, as of tonight, um, for the 20% donation based on the permitting fees for the multifamily residential, and the 10% donation for our commercial aspect, all going to the, um, Affordable Housing Fund. Um, I personally am very excited to be part of a team that's taking part of this proactively, and we're happy to answer any questions you have about that, but we did want to make that announcement, and I, I believe that makes us the first project before council, um, to take part in this initiative. So this council is incredibly aware of why I'm showing these pictures, but I can't help myself, I show them every time. Um, this overall development at 101, 202 was a landfill, um, and it could have stayed perpetually as a landfill, and we worked with the city, we worked with the underlying landowner. Um, the environmental remediation was, uh, amazing on this site. I actually got to see some of this compaction, uh, you know, feel it shake your chest across the entire piece of property, um, and we've changed that to what's on the property today, um, a very exciting evolution. Uh, the first phases of the, uh, Rio 2100 involve the Boyer Office, Phase 1 of Streetlights Residential to Cameron, which is up and running and currently, uh, leasing, uh, very successfully. Uh, so this is similar to the product we're discussing tonight, but I think we have some improvements. And then the area before you this evening is the Rio East in blue. Um, this is the new addition to the overall master plan community. We're excited to bring it to council. This is a kind of an idea of how, you know, site plan overlay, the, uh, existing and new uses will fold in. We have one unique aspect. Um, early on, when Boyer was getting approvals for the office portion on the north, the city staff asked if they would be willing to come back later and pull this into an MU4 mixed-use zoning, and Boyer agreed to do that. So we are pulling in an existing building into our zoning, and the new aspects are the multifamily residential at 335 units and the retail along Rio Salado at 13,500 square This gives you an idea of, uh, where some of the underlying zoning is today, uh, we will be moving this from the heavy industrial to MU4, and of course, most germane to this discussion is the city's wish under its own general plan to turn this entire area into mixed use. Um, that's why I believe one of the strongest recommendations we have for staff approval, uh, is in line with the general plan and the densities for this area, keeping in mind that, uh, we're just, we're just under the 65 dwelling units per acre with the 335, uh, units, and meeting full expectations of the, of the general plan. Just another perspective, um, to the west, we have all of our existing mixed-use, uh, uses, and to our east are existing and ongoing industrial uses. Just wanted to note that, uh, with the Cameron, uh, I think we had three different reviews with this project. I think we were up to five, just in terms of resubmittals, uh, with the preliminary site plan, and it really led to truly a phenomenal design that we're excited to share with you tonight. Um, all of the stipulations before you tonight from city staff we're in full agreement with. Uh, we're not asking the city to change or alter any of staff recommendations, uh, we come to you aligned with your, uh, community development department, I believe, and, and their goals for the site as well. We talked about how the office is incorporated and, of course, already exists today, constructed as you see here. Uh, the only change is the designation to the underlying zoning for the office, but we're not amending or tweaking any of the already approved design or development standards. To the south of the 335 units, four stories, we have our parking garage at four and a half, um, and wrapped by the building. Um, as you'll see shortly, part of our design, and also with the Cameron's design, is to try to make that parking garage facility invisible from the public. Just another rendering of how the, uh, units play out. Again, this is a market or a market plus rate, uh, development, uh, that's especially why we look so seriously at the Hometown For All initiative, so that we could provide a contribution and ongoing efforts to supporting affordable housing, even though this specific project doesn't provide, uh, that type of unit. So we've worked very closely on the design, not only with staff, but with our internal design team, to really push forward some phenomenal materials, um, elevations, and, and, uh, just use of the land in a way that makes it architecturally exciting, makes Rio Salado the type of welcoming, um, doorway into the city off of the freeway that you would want, and, uh, I think to best show that, I will, I will skip over some of our flat elevations, but obviously it'll allow you to see those for a couple seconds here. But our team has put together what is quite, uh, quite phenomenal fly-through, and so just, just really wanted to emphasize what, what we're trying to accomplish here. So you can see, um, that the elements of this architecture are not flat. Um, we wanted to show just the depth of the facade, you know, highlight the shadow play, um, especially from an environmental standpoint, as we're coming upriver here, to look at how there's so much shade provided, um, and I think there'll even be more abundance with actual real landscaping. Um, we've adjusted the scale of pedestrian by breaking down large lengths of the facade. Uh, we have, uh, very large courtyards, outdoor amenities, uh, there are two pools, uh, on this facility as opposed to one on...
Mr. Graff, you still, we, uh, we lost your audio. Mr. Graff, you still, we, we lost your audio. See, Mr. Graff, before you keep going, we've, we've lost your audio. Can we see if we can try to get it back before we continue with the presentation here?
Let's start a conspiracy theory about lasers. What's happening tonight?
I'm gonna pass on that one. I moved, we skipped the presentation, Mayor? We can, let's see, I'll, I'll give, I'll give a... I'm not sure, I'm not sure which side the problem started with. If it was Mr. Graff's or technical here.
Mr. Mayor, showing back. I show him from active from our end.
Should I say it one more time, please?
I show his microphone enabled from our end, so he may have lost connection on his end.
Okay. With that said, well, let's do this then. Let's go, Madam Clerk, do we have any comment cards on this item? And if we can get him back, he can, we can bring him back to finish the presentation later.
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. I have two speakers, first of which would be David Brooks, and I'm bringing him forward right now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Brooks, your microphone should be enabled.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, and thank you for a few minutes as well to the council members. I represent, or my name is David Brooks. I'm with the law firm of Brooks and Affiliates. My address is 4320 East Brown Road, Suite 111 in Mesa, Arizona. And I represent Jerry Brock, Kirsten Lindell, Brian Brock and their companies or entities, Brock Family Partnership and Brock Properties, II LLC. I appear to oppose the requested change by the applicant. And there are two fundamental reasons for our opposition. The first is that the applicant, and you heard that Mr. Leclerc is the owner, underlying owner of the property, one of his companies, Tellurian Development Company, has failed to comply with prior conditions that this council imposed on it back in August of 2016. That's our first reason. Our second reason is related, but it's a practical reason, and that is public safety with respect to the traffic on Rio Salado and River Road. I'll get to that more in a minute, but let me go back to the failure to comply with prior conditions. By way of authority for the council, the zoning code for the city of Tempe provides that the decision-making body, or this council, can withhold a requested approval if it determines that the current applicant has not fulfilled a previous condition or requirement from a previous approval granted to the applicant on the subject property, and withholding the permit would encourage compliance or is necessary to protect the public from future noncompliance. So built into the city zoning code gives the council the authority to refuse an application like this one if it finds that the applicant has failed to comply with prior conditions. And with that said, I want to take the council back to August 4th, 2016. At that council meeting, and I believe four members of the council who are currently on the council were at that meeting, and I believe Vice Mayor Keating, it might have been your first meeting. But at that council meeting, the Tellurian Company asked the council to approve or confirm agreements that it had and that it assumed from the prior property owner, Mira Vista, that it would get a 40-year GIPlet property, property tax abatement as part of the process of moving forward and doing the remediation that Mr. Graff mentioned earlier. And as part of that discussion, an amendment to that resolution was brought. The amendment was focused on the problem of accessibility and circulation. And the idea was, you're going to develop this nice, beautiful piece of property that has been remediated, and parcels immediately adjacent to that property may have trouble accessing Rio Salado because of traffic and other reasons. And so there was an amendment that was brought, or a proposed amendment that was brought that would say that Tellurian acknowledges and agrees that it shall use the commercial best effort, efforts and agree to work with other owners to include a circulation plan for connectivity to benefit all adjacent parcels.
Mr. Brooks, your time's up. I'll give you the other 30 seconds to wrap up, though.
Okay. So the, the practical reality, Mr. Mayor, is that the applicant has not complied with that obligation. And because of that, if the council were to approve this request without providing circulation access to my clients, who are the Brocks, immediately to the east of this zoning request parcel, then you're going to have problems because my camp, my client's access to Rio Salado is only like 150 feet from the light. And sometimes when that light is red, traffic backs up and covers my client's entrance. So the whole process anticipated providing for circulation, and the applicant hasn't done it. And as a result, your Mr. Mayor and council members, we oppose and would encourage you to consider that as you think about this over the next several weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Really appreciate it. Sorry for having to jump in there. It's always awkward with this virtual technology of not being able to see people, so I apologize on my end on that. But thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Next up, Madam Clerk, I know we have one more speaker?
Yes, we do, Mayor. And I apologize if I pronounced the name right. I have Adrian Evercue.
Okay. Do we have Adrian here?
Adrian, your microphone should be enabled.
Mr. Mayor, are you able to hear me? This is Adrian Evercue.
Yes, Mr. Evercue. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Adrian Evercue. I'm a partner with the Boyer Company located at 4250 East Indian School Road. Thank you, everyone, for, for gathering tonight, and I appreciate the time, and I'll, I'll try to keep it brief. The Boyer Company obviously has been involved with the Rio 2100 Park, and to date, we've, we've developed five office buildings there that we're very proud of, to build on what was a former dump site and, and has been able to create a lot of economic employment opportunities for the city. We, when we developed the, the building that, that is up and operational, that's been there about a year, which we call the Phase 5 Rio East Building, is a four-story building just north of the proposed apartments and retail that we're discussing tonight. It was asked, the, the city asked me after we received the necessary approvals to come back in and obviously get, clean this up with the, with the, what you see today and that we're asking permission on. So that building's up. We're very proud that the top floor is occupied by Morgan Stanley. The bottom floor is being occupied by Siemens, and that is why I'm here today to talk about that, hey, we are excited that more opportunity will come for the employees in the park to have a place to live for both Morgan Stanley, Siemens, Freedom Financial, Benchmark Electronics. There's various companies in there. Boyer has, to date, developed five buildings, spent roughly $250 million in development to allow this to happen, and we're very proud of, of what you see there today, and we're very hopeful that, yeah, obviously, we'll receive the necessary approvals with what, what we see. And obviously, it is a site with, that was once a dump site surrounded by a lot of industrial, and I believe it's now one of the best, if not the best, business parks in the city of Tempe. And, you know, if, if this does not meet the approval of the city, I, I, we would be disappointed in that it would remain heavy industrial, and obviously, heavy industrial is not a real good use when you have tenants like Morgan Stanley and Siemens, Benchmark Electronics, all those different things, because the last thing we want to see is, is heavy industrial happening around what we believe is, is a great project. So I appreciate your time tonight. Appreciate everything that you guys are considering, and, and thank you again.
Great. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. With that said, I'm gonna go back and circle back to Mr. Graff to see if he'd like to finish the presentation. I know he got cut off.
Wonderful. Mayor, Council, can you hear me again?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. All right, thanks for your patience with the audio issue, but I never left you, so I heard everything. So didn't, didn't leave you hanging. Appreciate the patience. I'll go through the next few slides, and, and then I'll address some of these items that have come up, and then we have other members of the team here as well that could help answer any questions that the Mayor and Council may have. So I, I hope you could see through the fly-through, just the quality of the development, the materials, just the articulation of the building, and really what you're going to see as the front facade facing Rio Salado. It, it's just exactly what the city ordered for the MU4 evolution of this site. So in addition to that, I, I think a couple of questions had come up as we were working with the city on what types of amenities we are providing on this site. And this exhibit is really helpful for that because it shows that we've gone above and beyond. In addition, obviously, to our surrounding landscaping areas for walking dogs, which, of course, would be required regardless, we have various areas of private seating, lounge space, open fire pits, dog walking parks. We have two separate pools, which were direct comments that we have received from the Cameron and other projects that kind of the dual pools in different areas would be highly required and very amenitized for our, you know, our, our residents and our tenants. And overall, this just creates kind of a master little community, which, of course, the goal of, you know, speaking of Boyer's office, is to have these residents work, live and play in this area. Ideally, somebody would have very low use for cars and be able to work and patronize the different areas around. I'd be remiss if I didn't quickly go over the residential, sorry, the retail portion, again, 13,500 square feet, but this has been a really responsible endeavor because we're thinking about the pandemic, and we're thinking about where this will play out when these buildings come to fruition. And so we have an outdoor patio. We have two drive-through uses capable for this site, and the entire circulation is set up for a curbside pickup if we are still afflicted with the pandemic at the level we are today. So we think this is a viable plan. It'll allow for various retail, restaurant use. We all know how successful the new Spinato's location has been. We have Boyer Office tenants and residents of the Cameron patronizing these exact places as of today, and it's really the final component to true mixed use. I'll, I'll stop here for now in terms of the formal presentation, and I'll go ahead and turn and, and discuss some of the, the comments we received. You know, what I'd like to state on the record to start is, you know, I, I've been doing this long enough to be able to say that it's, it's surprising to have a, a litigator opposing our case. It really gets to the heart of the issue at hand, which is, this is a land use zoning and best use evaluation by the city for what was once a landfill and what will now become residential, retail and supported office. And unlike the type of opposition that we may face from legitimate neighborhood associations in other areas, this opposition seems to come in focused entirely on the pending litigation, the lawsuit that's been filed against the underlying landowner. And I understand the severity of those concerns, but the question of whether a forced access point at this stage in development could hinge on whether this case is approved or denied, in my legal opinion, doesn't seem to be an appropriate question. There have been ongoing negotiations and discussions between these parties. This is a classic case of two private landowners that do, you know, do intend need to work something out. Right now, unfortunately, it, it will be worked out in litigation. But these are typically the things that we see resolved in private agreements and not through measures through the city. And, and let me give you just an off, off-the-wall example quickly. I recently assisted a client who needed to rezone their property, but they didn't have enough parking on site. And in order for them to even get close to rezoning the site, they were going to need shared parking agreement with their neighbor. And if that neighbor wasn't willing to provide that, or if that was at a cost or a price point that my client wasn't willing to proceed with, it wouldn't have been appropriate for my client to then ask the city to force that individual to provide the parking. You see, that has to be determined through private development negotiations between the parties, and, and that's really what we're trying to emphasize here today. We also can't imagine from a planning standpoint that a forced access point could be viable between a mixed use development and the adjacent industrial. The, the adjacent industrial is ongoing, successful. We are appropriately buffered from that use. They are appropriately buffered from us, and we have a way to stay compatible when and if until Mr. Brock's property is rezoned, if that's his choice, to mixed use with compatible mixed uses. So again, we have multiple people that can answer questions tonight, but I, I'm, I'm fairly, you know, passionate about the fact that we have a solid land use case. It meets the legal tests for a PAD. It meets the legal tests for a rezoning and for a DPR. We have unanimous approval from the DRC, full support from city staff, and we've worked tirelessly to bring every parcel on this site to fruition. So with that, Mayor and Council, I will end my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions, or Andy Abraham from our team could also be made a panelist to answer any questions specific to the pending litigation or what's been said today.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Graff. Appreciate the presentation this evening. It's a reminder to the public, this is only the first public hearing. We're not going to take final disposition until March 25th, but with that said, I'm gonna go ahead and look to council if they have any comments or questions.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's Lauren.
Yes, Councilmember Cubey.
Yes, can I ask Ryan Levesque to stand up? Zoom in, and, and Webex in, and just, could he answer a question just about staff, staff opinion of the, the connection between the request for access and this zoning issue? Is there a connection to be made? When I do remember the conversation we had in 2016 about how we wanted best faith efforts to proceed and that we hope there would be an agreement, but I don't recall the exact particulars. Does it really weigh into this decision before us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Cubey, Ryan Levesque, Deputy Director in the Planning Division. When that agreement was established, it was part of the development agreement, so it was not a zoning action request coming before at that time. But I know in the past, there have been good faith efforts moving forward, specifically this lot site. There was a previous owner and a previous multifamily development that was proposing a future connection to the north, that then ultimately, as a result of Boyer purchasing the property and developing for a new office building, has provided that connection. So with the current layout, there are no proposed changes to the site circulation, both development sites, both the multifamily and the commercial access off the padlot to the existing private drive, and that driveway is connected to the signalized intersection along Rio Salado. So it looks like there's opportunity on the north portions of the property because the private drive is aligned and adjacent to the east side of the property. It looks like there is still potential opportunities to work in a reasonable commercial... to work in a reasonable commercial opportunity for future development to connect with one another on these properties.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Any other council members have any comments or questions for either Mr. Graff or for staff? All right. Hearing none, once again, just as I said before, this is only the first public hearing for this. The council will not be taking a final vote on this item until March 25th. So with that said, we're going to go ahead and move on. Mr. Graff, thank you for the presentation. And thank you to all the speakers this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
All right, next up is Item 6B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a development and disposition agreement with Art Space Projects Incorporated, a Minnesota nonprofit corporation. Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public on this item?
None for this item, Mayor.
Great, thanks. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. Once again, I'm going to remind everyone that we're not taking a vote here this evening. This is going to be voted on on March 25th during the second and final public hearing. All right, next up. Agenda items, Items 6C1 through 6C3 are scheduled for second hearing, second public hearing and final adoption were read and introduced on January 14, 2021. And Items 64 through 67 were read and introduced on January 28, 2021. So votes on all seven items will be taken tonight. Next up here, Item 6C1 is to hold the second and final public hearing to amend Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 20, Section 2-365 regarding membership on the Tempe Veterans Commission. Is staff available to make a statement on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and say, Madam Clerk, any comments from the public on this item?
Nothing for this item, Mayor.
Anyone from council wishing to speak?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Councilmember, second. Okay, moved by Councilmember Navarro, believed seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. We go ahead and call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage? Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye, Mayor.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6C1 passes unanimously, seven to zero. The next item under the section is Item 6C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the dedication of right-of-way easement and certain city-owned land related to the McClintock Drive Widening Improvements Project for use as public right-of-way and authorizing the city engineer to execute a declaration memorializing such dedication and related documents. Were there any comments received on this item, Madam Clerk?
None for this item, Mayor.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Was that a motion I heard?
Yes, Mayor, move to approve.
Moved by Vice Mayor Keating, seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. I'm going to go ahead and take a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6C2 passes unanimously, seven to zero. The next item under the section is Item 6C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, Article 7, relating to the Risk Management Trust Board by amending Section 2-505 relating to members. Is staff available to make a statement on this item? All right, seeing none. Actually, I see Tom Dunson. Tom, do you have a comment on this item?
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Great, great. Mayor, this is a request to hold a second and final public hearing related to the Risk Management Trust Board Amendment of the City Code. These are just technical corrections to specifically identify city staff as our CFO and to be members of the board. And it also addresses the terms of the city staff and council member. And with that, I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Dunson. Really appreciate it. All right. Council, any comments on this item? Actually, I should ask first, Madam Clerk, were there any comments from the public on this item?
None for this item, Mayor.
Okay, council, any comments or questions?
No, move to approve it. Move to approve, ma'am.
All right. Okay, moved by Councilmember Arredondo Savage, seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. I'll go ahead and call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6C3 passes unanimously, seven to zero. The next item under the section is Item 6C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Tempe, Maricopa County, state of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter 4, Article 7, Arizona Revised Statutes as amended by annexing 17.332 plus or minus acres of properties located in an area south of East Curry Road, west of North Miller Road, and north of East Gilbert Drive. Do I have any statements by staff on this? Are we good? All right, Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public on this item?
Nothing from the public on this item, Mayor. But I do have Julie in present.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Any members of council who wish to comment on this item?
Move to approve.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Adams.
Okay, let's do this then, since there's a comment. Sure, unless it's a motion on the table, I'll need to get a second first that I can go to council comments. So there was a motion by Vice Mayor Keating to approve.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Adams, I'll turn it over to you.
I'll second.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank, I want to thank Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember Navarro for their hard work and helping on this project. I want to thank community leaders, Kim Gaffney Loza and Darlene Justice for their help. I also want to thank Charles Hugh Mantle and the developer who took the risk on this project and is willing to go forward with it. And finally, I want to thank our amazing staff that carried the water for this project. And I just really am excited to make this happen. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Anyone else, council, any comments before we take a vote? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and take a roll call vote here. Councilmember Navarro? Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams? Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That item passes unanimously, seven to zero. The next item under the section is Item 6C5, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from AG to MU4 and a planned area development overlay to establish development standards. A public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing a zoning plan, authorizing a general plan projected density map amendment from medium to high density, which is up to 25 dwelling units per acre, to high density limited, which is up to 45 dwelling units per acre, and a development plan review for a new four-to-five-story development containing 651 dwelling units with commercial along with five live-work units for Banyan North Tempe located at 1255 East Curry Road. The applicant is Hugh Mantle and Affilius. A resolution authorizing the general plan amendment requires at least a two-thirds council majority vote, which is five out of seven council members, for approval. Is the applicant available to make a statement, Mr. Hugh Mantle? And I should also ask from council, I know Mr. Hugh Mantle gave a presentation during the first public hearing to wish to have another one this evening or a brief one?
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Mayor, without the presentation.
I would like to speak.
I second that, Mayor, but I would just ask for transparency, just a short overview.
That sounds good. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Mr. Hugh Mantle, I hear you on the line?
Yes, in fact, in the first hearing, I believe one of the council members had asked for a 45-minute presentation. And so we're certainly prepared to give that. But before I do...
Charles, I'm sorry, that was four to five minutes.
Very well, Councilmember Arredondo. We try to listen carefully. So we can give that presentation as well. But before I do, the council's very kind last meeting and said some nice things. I want to say some things as well. This has been a very difficult road. It's a very challenging case, bringing multiple owners into the city of Tempe. We all know the history of how challenging that can be. And I want to say that we wouldn't do it without leadership from a number of people. And it's worth taking a few minutes to talk about because I think it's an important change in what is not part of Tempe, but is one of the worst areas inside of Tempe. And we're really proud to be able to be part of this transformation. First, Councilman Adams, you and the mayor have been phenomenal in taking this case and helping us all get to a place that's a win for everyone. It's worth pointing out that about a year ago, this was a case that staff didn't support. And it looks like we will now get to a point where we have strong community support, strong staff support, and hopefully, strong support from the council. From a staff perspective, we wouldn't be here without Donna Kennedy. And so I really appreciate her support. But also, the community has been really involved. Kim Gaffney and Darlene Justice and Lane Caraway have all been willing to sit down with us, take their time, and help us come up with a project that works for everyone. There have been others too, but those three in particular have been really helpful. One of the things I would like to say, Mr. Mayor, and particularly Councilmember Adams, one of the things that was a struggle for everyone is we understood and still understand the city's goals for housing. And so this was a challenge because of the environmental impacts on the site, the need to bring pretty outdated properties up to code and to do it in a way that creates the kind of environment that everyone wants. This is not one of those projects, unfortunately, where we could make affordable housing a component of it. However, we have understood the goals and desires of the city. We understand how important it is to the city. It was, I think, Ms. Gaffney who pointed out that while it was maybe something she didn't want in her neighborhood in this particular project, that this is a project that needed to move forward now rather than wait, that it was important to even Kim to find other ways to do it. And because of that, we are going to, we are pledging here today to be part of your hometown for all. And so we'll be providing a voluntary donation as a result of that so that while we're meeting our goals and the city's goals for this piece, the city can find other ways to move forward on its goals for affordable housing and really respect the council for making that a priority and recognizing that maybe it can't happen in the same way in every case, but finding a way that we could move forward and also help that goal on this site. I'm happy to provide the full presentation. But as an overall summary, and then I will turn to Councilman Arredondo and Member Arredondo and see if that's sufficient. You know, this is a roughly 16-acre site. The site has been in the county forever. And it's really become dilapidated. It has become, as you heard from some of the neighbors in the last meeting, a real source of criminal activity. Today, the Tempe Police Department and the Tempe Fire Department don't have jurisdiction, neither does code enforcement. And so Tempe isn't able to make this unsightly area live up to the standards that Tempe, we're also proud of in Tempe. And so instead, we're proposing a residential project, roughly 650 units. And we really spent a lot of time working the staff, not only in the design of the building, but I think equally important on the design of both Miller and Curry and some of the other streets and amenities. We've added a dog park that will be open to the public. But we've also really focused on the pedestrian activity. Of course, we're trying to create a great environment for our residents, the people who will live in the building. But we've also kept a focus on the appearance and the livability of the project for those who just happen to be walking by. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm happy to give a more detailed presentation. I don't want to overstay my welcome, having heard such great things in the past. But we do have a presentation we're prepared to provide if you'd like it.
Thank you, Mr. Hugh Mantle. I should, I'll turn to Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Is that sufficient for you? Would you like a little bit more?
No, that's good, Mayor. Thank you.
Sounds good, just checking with you. Thank you. All right, I know we've got Darlene Justice here who'd like to comment from the public. Can we elevate her to Speaker?
Certainly, Mayor. I didn't have a speaker card for her, so I'll get her elevated.
She got me right in the chat over here. So I saw her comment, wanted to make sure I acknowledged her.
Got it. We don't normally manage the chat, but right now I have her unmuted. And Darlene, go ahead and take the floor.
Hi, thank you so very much. I've been really frustrated. I've been trying to get in and it didn't seem to work. But it did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I just want to thank you all. I thank you, Mayor of Tempe. I thank the city council. I thank Jennifer Adams for spearheading a lot of this. I know she was told at some point under another administration, it's never going to happen to annex and to build out starting in the county island. I've lived in Tempe for over 55 years. I've watched this area go down and down and down, the city, the county island. And we've worked very hard with North Tempe Neighborhood Association and surrounding neighbors to try to bring some sanity in the county island, especially along Gilbert. There are good businesses in the county island, but there's also a lot of negligent businesses. And we have had real problems with homeless. And they really aren't being served properly in this area either. So people coming down the 202 look over to the county island and think they're looking into Tempe. And they see this horrible graffiti, which Maricopa County doesn't even have an ordinance against. This is a huge thing for our community. I want to thank you all. I thank Charles Hugh Mantle for helping to put all this together. I think that about... Please excuse me. The development is beautiful. And I just want to take this chance to thank you all. It's been a very long day in our household today. So excuse my hoarseness. I don't have the virus. Anyway, thank you all very much. And I'm really proud to live in Tempe today. I probably, and I would, I'm going to try to speak at the end of the night on one other little thing. But again, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me to speak. And I'll try to get in at the end with the public comment. Thank you very much.
You got it. Thank you, Ms. Justice. Really appreciate it. And thank you for all of your work and stewardship of the North Tempe Neighborhood Association stewardship of the North Tempe Neighborhood Association and that entire region for so many years now. So, just thank you so much. Let's see here, wanted to, let's see, Madam Clerk, any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
Not for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I'm going to turn to the council and see if we have any comments or discussions from I'll make a couple of quick comments, just in case anyone wants to jump in in a minute. Echoing a lot of what's already been said this evening, I wanted to thank a few people. First of all, to Councilmember Jennifer Adams for your hard work, working on not only the annexation, but also the Banyan Project. I know one of the first things you and I talked about when I started as mayor was, you know, Cory, this is really something that I want to get done. I think it's going to be huge for the neighborhood. They clearly want it to happen, and I really support it, and I know you threw a lot of weight and support behind getting this done. So, I wanted to thank you for first having that conversation with me and for obviously really staying true to this and really continuing to push until this got done. I do think this is going to be a real game changer for North Tempe. To Darlene Justice and Kim Gaffney Loza, who I spoke with very directly about this, I know Lane Caraway as well, just wanted to thank them for their advocacy. They've all been very active in the North Tempe neighborhoods for such a long period of time, and this is one of those really good projects that I do think is going to help to transform that County Island area and is going to help to really continue to uplift the entire region. So, I wanted to thank them for their support and for continuing to sort of forcefully, but very politely advocate to the council for the change they want to see in their own neighborhood. I really appreciate all the times I get a chance to meet with them, and I just really appreciate their support of this project. And also, to Charles Hulmantle for putting this together. I mean, obviously, this hasn't been done because it's a complex project to put together. And so, the fact of the matter that you were able to work with your client and to work with the neighbors in North Tempe to actually get this across the finish line, just wanted to thank you for your stewardship and making sure that we put together a good deal on behalf of the client, but obviously, most importantly, on behalf of the North Tempe neighbors. So, wanted to thank him as well publicly. Anyone else from council want to speak on this item?
Move to approve, Mayor.
All right, so here's the deal. We've got, actually, interestingly enough, we have three votes on this item, which is actually a little different than we normally would do. I don't know if we, and also, I think, let's see, councilmembers, if we're not speaking, can we mute for a second, since I'm hearing some background? Look at our council, council, once again, if we can mute when we're not actively speaking, it'd be great to interrupt the broadcast here, so. Okay, so, the first vote here is going to be on the zoning map amendment and the planned area development overlay. So, I'm going to ask for a motion on the ordinance for a zoning map amendment and a planned area development overlay, and then a second. So, I heard the motion was made by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro? Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that an aye vote? Councilmember Adams, just looking for an aye vote from you? Apologies, everyone watching, for some of the technical difficulties this evening. We've never had these kinds of challenges, but we're going to work through it, so. I'm just going to go to- Councilmember Adams, just one more time for you, whatever, are you an aye on the project here? Yes, Mr. Chay.
I'm looking, I see that she's not one of the panelists at the moment. She might be restarting her connection or something like that, so might just be a second.
Okay, I'm going to hold the vote for one more minute here, just to let her get back Okay, I'm going to have to go ahead and move forward then here. So, that is an aye vote, aye as well, that motion passes six to zero. Okay, second vote here is the second, the General Plan projected density map amendment. I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion on that one. Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. I'm going to go ahead and call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
And let's see, it's Councilmember Adams back in. Oh, yep, I got a yes. Okay, perfect. So, I'm going to go ahead, so I get an aye there, so that, an aye vote, aye as well, that motion passes seven to zero. Question, actually, too, Madam Clerk, Councilmember Adams also indicated she meant to vote yes on the previous item. Would that work to record it that way?
We can amend that record.
Okay, it's great. So, let me just go back and just quickly say for the record that the first vote there passes seven to zero, and the second vote passes seven to zero. And then, the third vote here is for the development plan review. I'm going to ask for a motion on the development plan review.
Still moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Keating. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. I'm going to go call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams has indicated she votes aye as well, and aye vote aye too. And that motion, so that means item 6C5, all three motions pass unanimously, seven to zero.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hulmantle. Next up is item 6C6, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a Code text amendment consisting of changes with the zoning and development code, section 3-426, medical marijuana, and other related sections for the regulation of recreational marijuana in compliance with the Smart and Safe Arizona Act for Marijuana Initiative, Proposition 207. The applicant is the city of Tempe. Does the staff care to make a statement on this item?
Mayor, thank you. Ryan LeVey here with Deputy Director of Community Development and Planning Division. At the first hearing, we had some input comments from Councilmember QB regarding the medical marijuana separation requirements for cultivation facilities. The question was asked is to look into what the separation requirements or availability of land would look like if we remove the separation requirements from the cultivation facilities. And just a second, I'm going to share my screen and show you. We've provided as part of the attachments in the updated packet. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes, Ryan.
Okay, so, this map represents the current separation requirements for medical marijuana cultivation, shows the land area in gray that's available for cultivation. As currently drafted, or as currently written in the code, cultivation facilities are allowed to cluster and be near one another, so there's no separation requirement from one cultivation to another. And this accounts for approximately over 1,200 acres of land available within the city of Tempe for cultivation-only facilities in general industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts. If we were to remove the separation requirements and still allow the cultivation facilities in general industrial and heavy industrial zoning districts, this map depicts the areas that would be eligible for those locations in Tempe, which accounts for close to 5,000 acres of land available. Staff is recommending, in concert with the city attorney's office, that we seek action on the current draft ordinance as presented, but if council wants to consider moving forward a future direction on the changes to medical marijuana cultivation facilities, we can certainly bring that item back for a future Code text amendment and adoption request. Thank you, and if you have any questions at this time, I am available.
Thank you, Ryan. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask for, I got a council, were there any comments received from the public regarding this item?
Mayor, I do have one request to speak from Andrew Myers.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. Myers, feel free to go ahead whenever you're ready.
Your microphone should be in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Andrew Myers. I'm representing Copper State Farms, who recently acquired a marijuana dispensary and cultivation facility at 2424 West University. I'm here to support the ordinance and the proposed zoning changes, and I just want to thank staff and council, Ryan in particular, for thoughtful and diligent effort in creating what we think is a truly fair and equitable regulatory framework, and we really look forward to our future with the city of Tempe. So, thank you very much for all of your effort. Much appreciated.
Great, thank you, Andrew, really appreciate it. All right, council, any members want to address this item? Comments or discussion?
Mayor, this is Robin. I just want to say thanks for the work, and I'm happy to move approval of the way it's presented, but not opposed to looking at, you know, maybe within a year and see what happens if there's changes to be made. But, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward as staff recommended. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, okay. Moved by Councilmember Arredondo Savage, seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. I'm going to go ahead and call for a roll call. Councilmember Navarro?
Mr. Mayor, I have my hand, sorry, I'd had my hand up before.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Go for it.
Yeah, I just want to thank Ryan for doing all that work and knowing that we have capacity of 1,200 acres. That's, wow, that's a lot, and 5,000, I don't see the need to move to that. And I also learned recently that if you increase cultivation, you don't necessarily bring in more tax dollars, because you tax at the point of sale, not at the point of where you grow it. So, that also cemented my understanding, so I am happy to support this. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember QB, sorry about missing you earlier. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call for that roll call vote again. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams? And aye vote, aye as well, item 6C6 passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is item 6C7, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for revisions to the Tempe City Code by adding a new chapter 22A for the regulation of marijuana on public property. Is staff available to make a statement on this? Perhaps Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Judy, the city attorney, Judy Baumann, if that's okay, I'll go ahead and introduce this.
Or perhaps Judy.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to let the mayor and council, the public, know that this proposed regulation for regulating the use, consumption, possession of marijuana on public property is consistent with state law and other local jurisdictions. We have looked at the cities of Chandler, Gilbert, Scottsdale, and Mesa, and I also wanted to let the folks know that we have Commander Hale from the Tempe Police Department, as well as Vanessa Cuevas, our police legal advisor, available should any questions be raised. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Judy, really appreciate it. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public on this item?
Mayor, I do have one comment card to be read into the record.
Okay.
Comes from Mr. David Sokolowski, resident of Tempe. He writes, "Based on the language of this law, Tempe will criminalize possession of marijuana on city property like bus stops. The USA has a long history of using laws like this in combination with stop and frisk to target and discriminate against black people and people without housing. Due to recent events in Tempe and the necessity of a police advisory board, I am concerned how this law will disproportionately impact some members of our community. The city should adopt policies that reduce the harm of drug use in society. We must focus on safe, responsible, and appropriate strategies when adjusting to legalization of marijuana. For example, free bus rides on 420 would discourage DUI. Through policies that focus on harm reduction versus punishment, we can be more effective at creating safe and open spaces for communication that allow our community to effectively address drug use in our society without criminalizing some of our most vulnerable residents. Tempe Police would be using valuable resources to stop and frisk people for having a marijuana edible, and that doesn't seem to be consistent with the goals of the police advisory board." And that's it, Mayor.
Great, thank you so much. All right, council, any comments or discussion on this item?
Approve. A second.
I have a question, is Lauren?
Yes, Councilmember QB.
So, it's a civil misdemeanor, it's not criminal, is that right? Maybe Judy could answer that. I don't believe it's, it would be a criminal violation.
Yep, Madam City Attorney, can you address that?
Sure, thank you. I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead.
And also, what is the amount of the misdemeanor? What would it cost? And is it for someone possessing or someone using in a public space?
Thank you, council member. So, the prohibition on public property, I'm sorry, are you speaking? Oh, okay. The prohibition on public property includes possession, smoking, consuming, sale, or distribution, the storing, cultivation, manufacture, or production of marijuana or marijuana products on property that is occupied, owned, controlled, or operated by the city. This would also prohibit smoking marijuana in an open space or in a public place in the city, which is, again, consistent with the language of the Smart and Safe Initiative that has passed. So, the penalty is a Class 1 misdemeanor, as set forth in the Tempe City Code, section 1-7A. And, I'm sorry, what was your other question?
The question about, I think the question was, is it a civil or criminal penalty, and what is the amount of the fine?
Yes, so, it is a Class 1 misdemeanor, and I believe that could result in a fine up to $2,500. I will defer to Commander Hale if he has additional information at the ready.
Yeah, I don't have any additional information regarding the fine. That would be set by the courts, but it's anywhere from zero, as Judy said, up to $2,500.
Mr. Mayor, then, I would like to voice objections to that. I just, if you're possessing marijuana, it's legal to own it, and if you're possessing a bottle of wine on a city bus, would you, would there be a violation or a civil misdemeanor? It doesn't seem to make sense to me, but perhaps you could, Commander Hale, why possession, using, why is possession something to be punished for a possession of cannabis, which would be legal?
Mayor and council, we've been working with the industry. We recognize that in Arizona, where the citizens have voted to support the legalization of marijuana, and working with the industry collaboratively to adopt these responsible zoning and other regulations to support the healthy growth of the industry. This is one of the regulations that we've tried to adopt, that is not only consistent with other jurisdictions, but also consistent with the Arizona Safe and Final, or, excuse me, the Arizona Smart and Safe Arizona Act. So, we are proposing that this is just to be consistent, and it brings about the safety for everybody involved, including the citizens who were voting for the regulation and those that did not, as well as bring safety and reduce liability for the city.
So, why wouldn't that, does Phoenix also follow that same path? The city of Phoenix, because that wasn't mentioned as one of the cities that has taken up a similar kind of prohibition?
Thank you, council member. Several of the cities that we- Several of the cities that we looked at are in different stages of proposing legislation, regulations, if you will. And so the ones that we found that had gone through the process already and that we could report on were Chandler, Gilbert, Mesa, and Scottsdale. It is possible that the city of Phoenix may have something proposed, but I don't know if they have actually voted on or adopted that yet. We can certainly look into that and report back.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to conclude. I have genuine concerns. What about a low-income resident who is taking the bus to a facility and purchases cannabis, and then gets on the bus and somehow gets a civil misdemeanor for possession? To me, the, what you're concerned, or most concerned about is possibly use. You don't allow people to drink from an open container on a bus. You don't allow people to drink in a park without a permit. So I just have a real concern that this could be used and would disproportionately affect people who are, who ride, ride our transportation system, for one. So, I mean, I'll be voting no, but I would maybe hope we could continue this, to look at this more seriously, because I'm very concerned about how cannabis, which is legal, could be, you could get up to a $2,500 fine for, for possessing some on a bus, on a city bus.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Let me just ask, perhaps Ryan, is there a, is this on a specific deadline right now? Like, if this is not approved this evening, just by chance, is that gonna create some kind of an issue in terms of our compliance? I mean, I'm assuming no, given the fact that, you know, as our city attorney said, that there are still other jurisdictions that are in the process of frankly, working on this right now. So I'm assuming that we might even be a little bit ahead of where they are. So I'm just curious as to like, from a timing standpoint, you know, if this happens to be delayed to the March 25th meeting, is that gonna cause some kind of major interruption or get us out of compliance?
Sure, Mayor, members of the council. We certainly met our timing deadline expectations with the enaction of the zoning changes related to the code text amendment. And maybe Judy can speak on whether or not there's any concerns with delays regarding the enforcement aspect of the city code.
Sure, thank you for that, Ryan. If it is the consensus of the council to postpone this vote until March 25th, we would have no concern or objection to doing that. And we could provide additional information to the council with regard to other jurisdictions at that time.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Any other members of council, any comments or questions on this item?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, I would just move to postpone this until the next council meeting and get some further information.
Okay, it's been moved to postpone this till the next meeting by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember QB. We go ahead and take a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams? Councilmember Adams?
I believe she lost her connection again.
Okay, I, then I vote aye as well, given the fact this is only a continuation. That, that item passes six to zero with Councilmember Adams absent. And we'll just continue that item till the March 25th, 2021 meeting. All right, next up, item number seven, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I'm gonna go ahead and call on Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to wish you, Mayor, Happy Valentine's Day, and the citizens of Tempe. Also want to wish my wife a happy birthday, which is on Valentine's Day, which means I have to pay for two things. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. I love you too. Councilmember QB?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Garland?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams? Vice Mayor Keating?
Nothing from me, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Well, I got a 45-minute presentation, Mayor. I hope you don't mind.
Let's do this.
Okay, are you ready then? No, I just have one quick announcement, not other, I mean, obviously Joel being the suck-up that he is. Happy Valentine's Day, Mayor, to you and to all my colleagues and everybody out there. Hope you have a nice, safe, fun Valentine's Day. But, you know, I know everybody is, you know, struggling right now. And I think one of the things that, you know, I just want to remind people is the city of Tempe does a lot of things really well. And I know a lot of our families and individuals, you know, are suffering with somebody in their, in their life that has dementia. And us being a dementia-friendly Tempe, I don't want people to forget that we have a lot of resources and information and can answer all the questions that you may have. And so please don't, you know, please don't hesitate to reach out to the, to the city and to our individuals. That can certainly help. We have a workshop coming up on 3/10 that's gonna talk about driving and dementia. And I know that's always kind of an issue. And Tempe Accelerates, which is really good. You can learn a little bit about what our programs are doing selectively to really make change in our community. And I would encourage people that maybe hasn't had an opportunity to sit in on a Tempe Accelerates to take that time to do that. Now that it's virtual, it's kind of one of those things that I think everybody can take a part of. And it's really just good to see the moving parts of things that we can do to really accelerate our, our programs and make different changes in Tempe. So I just want to remind people that, you know, dementia happens everywhere. And if you know somebody or have a loved one, and you're a caregiver or whatever it may be, and you have some questions or concerns and need some help and assistance, you know, please remember to, to lean on us. And that's why we're here. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. I don't have any announcements. Next up, item eight is public appearances. So Matt Schmel was scheduled to under public appearances this evening. However, he advised me yesterday, he wished to be removed from scheduled public appearances portion of this meeting. I was gonna ask our city attorney and our city clerk, are we able to take unscheduled public appearances right now?
Mayor, we can. And just as a public announcement, I do want to note that we do usually ask for a speaker card to be submitted via tempe.gov/clerk. Verbally earlier, Ms. Justice did request to speak at the end of the meeting, and that'll be up to your discretion, Mayor, but for open meeting law purposes and record keeping, we do require those speaker cards normally.
Okay, sounds good, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Appreciate that. I was gonna say, yeah, we can definitely let Ms. Justice speak. We won't be able to engage on this item since it would be an unscheduled public appearance. But I can recognize Ms. Justice as soon as she's ready to go forward.
Thank you.
And you have about, you know, three minutes, so.
Thank you very much. Again, I want to thank you for item 5C10, which was not a public item and that, but that's for Mr. Ken Singh, his wife Lee, and his son KR. Singh Meadows has a new contract, and I really, really thank you so very much. I think that's gonna help us keep him in North Tempe for Tempe, for us and for everybody. Right now, he, he will have the ability to have events and dinners, concerts, glamping. He's gonna have an area where he can plant, actually, maybe sporting events and different community events. This is really, really important because Mr. Singh has organic fruits and vegetables. We all need things like this. This is a pandemic that's been going on. I, I was a little upset earlier. I'll tell you, I have a granddaughter who has a little grandbaby who's 18 months old. My granddaughter is in the hospital right now getting Remy Dysibier. She's got the virus. And thank God that they're gonna give her this and send her home. I was overseeing Mr. Singh earlier today, not knowing that my granddaughter, that this was going forward with her. But I, he blessed me with some of his wonderful organic fruits and vegetables for my daughter, who you all know, I have a daughter too that's going through things. Every one of us, we're all above ground, thank God. And thank God for people like Mr. Singh. Thank God for people like you, Mr. Mayor, and city council people for giving us a wonderful place to live in Tempe. Thank you again for your votes. Thank you for the unanimous vote. And thank you, Lauren, for, and that too, for the development in the county island. I'm not gonna take any more of your time, but I just wanted to say, and, and I'm sorry that I didn't fill out a card. I signed up this morning, but I thought I was gonna get back earlier today and, and do that. So I've been scrambling trying to get on, and, and I thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. And happy Valentine's to all of you, because it's looking up for us too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Happy Valentine's Day to you and Bill as well.
Thank you.
With that said, we don't have anything left on the agenda, so we're gonna go ahead and adjourn at 7:50 PM. Council, we still have an executive session to finish, so let's go ahead and switch over to our next platform.